Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, January 23. We have another full house courtesy of our Plainville Fire Company. It's always nice to see everybody here. We have a few things to do. But first, I would like to ask you all to stand for the pledge. Councilman Wazorko will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight we have, under our presentations, the Fire Department Service Awards. We have a few things that are going to happen tonight, and I'm going to ask Councilman Cox, he will be taking over this part of the meeting, so if you will.
So first, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. We're going to honor some of our firefighters and some of their service award milestones. You know, they're volunteer here, and they, you know, are called out of bed, away from their families at all hours of the day and night to go help and serve our community. They also do endless things around town, such as, you know, their pasta dinners and helping with holiday events, and of course, the balloon festival. So there's just kind of a way for the council to thank them for their service and, you know, really for their loyalty to serving our community. So I'll have Chief Toner come up and say a few words.
Last time I stood up here in front of people at a council meeting, the tones went off, and everybody that was supposed to come up turned around and left, went to a fire. Hopefully, we don't get that tonight. I would just like to thank all the people, whether they're getting a service award or not, that are on our department. They're dedicated individuals who go through countless hours of training, countless hours away from their families, missed meals. The amount of work they do for the town of Plainville is just remarkable. They make being the chief of the department easy from that aspect. I'd like to thank everybody and congratulate everybody for all their dedication and hard work. Thanks, guys and gals. Didn't see Chad. James Lenoys Jr. George Davy. It's not often I get to call you Andrew. And Richard Nichols.
So now we'll have Senator Martin and Representative Pettit. They have a few proclamations for you guys as well, so I'll turn the floor over to them.
Congratulations. You have to live and get old to get one of these. So 25 years minimum. So we have three citations here, Senator Martin and I, for Mr. Nichols, Mr. Davies, and make sure the name's right, Mr. Moore. Introduced by myself and Senator Martin, and I'll let Senator Martin do the honors here on Mr. Davy, firefighter Davy.
So it is an official citation from the General Assembly, and it says, "Be hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to the three in recognition for your 25 years," is it 25, 30, and 20?
Forty.
Forty. "Years of firefighter service to the people of Plainville. You have been recognized as a professional who has brought high standards and unmatched energy and a passion to your profession, your leadership, and contributions to the town of Plainville. From the town of Plainville, all of us who are very appreciated. The entire membership of the General Assembly extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success." Signed, each of them by Martin M. Looney, the President pro temp of the Senate, Speaker of the House, Joe Arizomowitz, and Secretary of State Denise Merrill. Congratulations, guys.
Can I just say something? One thing, we just recognized 160 years of service. The town of Plainville's only been in existence for 150 as of this year. So I, for me, that put it in a little bit of perspective of how much, you know, not only the firefighters we recognize tonight, but, you know, to put it in perspective, 160 years of service, it's appreciated and, you know, like Councilman Cox said, all the time away from family, friends, dinners missed, you know, games missed, what have you. But thank you very much on behalf of the council. I think that's a heck of a number to recognize tonight.
It's very well said, and I too offer my most sincere thank you. Forty years and 35 years and 25 years of service to an organization that runs into burning buildings and runs over to burning vehicles, really, that is a tremendous, tremendous thing to say. And you're all heroes, every one of you. I see you, all of the guys in the audience that are here tonight. You have a great team that comes out and supports you every time something of a celebration happens. And yet again, sincerest thanks because you do a job that not many others would do. So we appreciate all that you do. Congratulations. Thank you. We'll take a little pause. I'm sure you all want to stay for the rest of our meeting, however. If that's not the case, we'll just take a moment while you say goodbye. Okay. All right. We'll continue on with the rest of our agenda. The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of January 7, 2019, regular meeting in 20, I'm sorry, January 15, 2019, Town Council and Board Education Joint Special Meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have anything to report tonight?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Okay. Since our last meeting, I did attend the three groups to which I'm the liaison. So just very quick highlights from all three. Committee on Aging, they reported a number of things, including the Christmas dinner. They had over 60 people there, plus the home deliveries. And it's all done by volunteers, which I always think is so important to point out. And there's also people that contribute things to it. In fact, our schools contributed the centerpieces. Also, of course, they're working on the, or have been finished and have submitted, proposed FY '20 budget. And then, of course, Sean and Rhonda are here tonight, and they're going to be talking about another initiative, and I won't steal their thunder. I'll let them do that in a little while. Conservation Commission, discussing already, Ideas for Earth Day 2019, and the Library Trustees. It's a meeting which the, our new director, Trish Thompson, it's her first year as director in Plainville, and her first year doing a budget for our town, and they really did a very detailed review of the development of the library budget for this year. And then, of course, and I'm sure you'll cover this too, Kathy, a number of us were at Tofflon School. I don't know if you wanted to mention that?
Wonderful.
Yeah. Number of us were at Tofflon School this morning, where Michael Zappa?
Correct.
Teacher at Tofflon School was awarded with one of the Milken Education Awards, which is a very major, major award. And Governor was there, the Commissioner of Education was there. It was a wonderful ceremony and assembly with all the students there as well. Very exciting.
It was great. Mr. Zappa received a check for $25,000 as part of this recognition. As we learned about today, the award is actually almost like any of the Oscars of education. That's how prestigious this award is. It's called the Milken Family Foundation Educator Award for 2018, and it was a great event. Councilman Nazo was there as well, along with Town Manager Lee.
Madam Chair.
Say something?
What I found most impressive is, you don't get nominated for this. They come and find you. So this isn't some self-serving award where you nominate yourself or your best friend nominates you. I mean, this is really prestigious. There's 33 educators in the country this year nationally, you know, 33 nationally recognized for this. Mr. Zappa was my son's art teacher, so it was, you know, helped a little bit of extra meaning for me. But what a great way to start the day.
Fabulous.
I mean, it was, you couldn't help but leave there with a smile on your face. It was terrific. Absolutely terrific. It's on the news, so if you have a chance, take a look at any of the news stations tonight.
Yeah, and as we said, it's such a, it's really a very special designation, and Mr. Zappa was the only one in the state of Connecticut to win this award this year. So you can understand how absolutely remarkable this achievement is, and the whole town is very proud of this accomplishment. And the school did a great job. We got to listen to the jazz band, who were wonderful, and it was wonderful to be there. They did a terrific job, so. Yep. Anybody else have anything to report? I just have a couple of quick items. Last Thursday, I was a stand-in for the Town Manager at the Chamber of Commerce State of the Town meeting. I presented some of the information that we saw from Robert's slideshow, and I did okay. I had that clicker going, and I didn't skip it too much, right, Scott? Scott was there. Scott was my moral support last Thursday, so I did present it. Also, presenting on behalf of the other presenters were Superintendent Brummett, John Bossy was there on behalf of the town, and Garrett Daigle also did a presentation. So it was very nice. It's an annual event, sparsely attended, but I think those that were there appreciated the information that we got, and it's an opportunity to get some of our information out to the public via the press as well. So it was a lot of fun, and I did do that, Robert, with the clicker, so. I don't typically do a slideshow, but there's a beautiful presentation Robert had created, and I was able to do that, so it was a little bit of fun. I just have a few more things to mention. We also, we already talked about Mr. Zappa. I also attended the Martin Luther King Breakfast at Bristol Eastern High School on Monday. This was a recognition of, it was sponsored by the Bristol NAACP, and it is a recognition of Dr. King and some of the things that he had brought forward during his lifetime as a writer, as a minister, and as a speaker. There were people from Plainville there. They were a lot of fun to see. I said a few words on behalf of the town of Plainville. It's an annual event, well-attended. They also had music, and they had a very nice presentation, so I was happy to be there on behalf of the town. And last but not least, I just want to make note that April 23 is the Chamber's Annual Awards Dinner. It will be at Nucci's, and tickets are available. You can call the Chamber at 860-747-6867 for tickets. The nominations for the awards are due by January 30. The categories that will be awarded are Business of the Year, Nonprofit of the Year, Distinguished Woman in Business, Distinguished Community Leadership, Family Business, and Beautification. So those are the awards that the Chamber will be presenting at their annual dinner. In case you'd like to attend, they'd be happy to have you there. And I guess that's it. Thank you. If there are no more announcements and reports, we'll go on to appointments and resignations. We have a few to do tonight. Number one.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to appoint, oh, I think we have, first of all, accept a resignation from the...
So do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to do that. A motion to accept the resignation, Van Kropinski from the Committee on Aging.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would just like to point out to the public that Ann Kropinski served 32 years as a member of the Committee on Aging, and 29 of those as secretary, literally taking the minutes at every meeting. And I had, you know, the, that was part of the time that I'd been the liaison, and she was truly, truly remarkable. And I'm sure the town will be sending in a recognition of her many years of service. She's a wonderful, wonderful person, and also a wonderful citizen of Plainville.
Sure is. Okay. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Now we'll move to the appointments.
Please.
I'd like to appoint Charlotte Politis to the Committee on Aging for the term ending on August 1, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
For the second vacancy in the Committee on Aging, I move to appoint Brenda Tella to the Committee on Aging for the term ending August 1, 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Mark Chase and Joseph Klepakki for two-year terms for the term ending November 9, 2020, to the Economic Development Agency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Any others? Sure.
Motion to appoint Helen Bergenti to a four-year term ending November 9, 2022, to the Economic Development Agency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Desiree Gorski for the term ending 1/31/24 for the Housing Authority.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Desiree Gorski for the term ending 1/31/24 for the Housing Authority.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any others? Okay. Thanks for taking care of all of that. Moving on to the Board of Education. The Board of Education is, as we speak, in the second meeting of their budget deliberation. So chairperson Deb Hardy gave me a few notes to read. Their budget deliberations were, one was last night, another one is tonight, and they, I believe, they have another one scheduled for next Wednesday if necessary. So they are in the midst of looking at their budget and deliberating about it, and at some point, they will vote on it, and it will be sent over to the town. She also mentioned that on January 24, they'll be attending a legislative breakfast at the state Capitol. And Jennifer DiLorenzo was named Assistant Principal for Plainville High School. Jennifer has, is a longtime teacher at Plainville High School. She's obtained all of her certifications to become the Assistant Principal, and she is replacing Mr. Johnson, who was elevated to principal recently. So congratulations to Jennifer. And that's her report for this month, so. All right. Report of the Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani. Do you have anything for us?
I do not.
Okay. Nice to see you. All right. On to the report of the Town Manager, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. First item I have is the March Bike Races. Matthew Stewart, who's president of the Hartford Cycling Club, is here this evening to give details on the upcoming spring training race series that will be held on the Farmington Valley Corporate Park off of Northwest Drive during the month of March. With your permission, I'd like to ask Mr. Stewart to step forward and tell us, tell the council a little bit about the races. As you may recall, many years ago, several years ago, there was a racing series that was at the park for probably five or six years, and then that died out, and I think it's somewhat of the inspiration for maybe reconstituting it, but under a slightly different leadership organization, so.
Either one. This one? Okay.
Coming straight from the cameraman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Matt Stewart. I'm the president of the Greater Hartford Cycling Club, and I'm also going to be the race director for the event that we're planning to do in March. It will be a series of four races that will be held. Basically, we're going to run it off of Farmington Valley Drive onto Corporate Avenue. It'll be raced in a circular race circuit, kind of like NASCAR, and we're going to have four categories. They'll be racing from 8:00 in the morning until 12:00 noon. At that point, the roads will be closed to traffic, but we have worked with the local businesses if they need to get in or somebody needs to get into the area. I've visited all the businesses except one in the area, and in most cases, we should be able to get them in without any problem within three to four minutes of minor delays. And I've informed them of that. I dropped them off all flyer. Most of the people were pretty happy that we're going to do the race on Sundays now and not on Saturdays. Our main goal is to promote cycling and the enjoyment and the health and fitness of the local cycling population. And in the years past, it was done on Saturdays. We decided to do Sundays just because it's a little easier for the businesses. Most of them are closed on Sunday, and we were able to get permission from many of the businesses to use their parking lots for parking and setup and breakdown of the event. We'll have four categories. We'll have a beginning category, a mid-level category, an advanced category, as well as a category for us old guys. So, I know, I'm a little selfish, but, you know. Basically, we're going to be running this with four other cycling clubs that are in the area, but the Greater Hartford Cycling Club will be the primary sponsor club for the event. It'll be run through USA Cycling, using their rules and regulations as well as their insurance, and the town will be covered with their insurance also during the event. I'd like to thank the Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager, as well as the Police Chief and the Director of Streets and Roads, that they helped me out with getting this organized and dotting the i's and crossing the t's for this event. We also have, cycling's also kind of unique when it comes to bike racing, that a lot of the people that participate or become new cyclists in an event are mentored by older cyclists, such as myself and other members of the club. You may not be aware of it, but there's a new organization called CCAP, which is the Connecticut Cycling Advancement Program, and they're starting to run cycling events for high school-age kids and younger. And they're starting to start teams in the high schools and in the grade schools for these young people to race, and they come out and ride with us on our club rides. So it's kind of an interesting sport that they're being mentored by adults and other people that have been in the sport for quite a while, and it's a good, healthy, healthy sport to participate in, and you can stay in good shape by doing it, and it's also a nice way to transport yourself around, especially if you're young and you don't have a car. But basically, we're going to be, we're finishing, we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's on this now. I've talked to all the business owners for the most part. One business owner had some reservations on where people were going to be standing and watching the race. I've addressed that with that particular owner, and we're going to restrict certain areas on that part of the course so that they don't interfere with his wishes. The rest of the business owners were very much in favor of the event, and were happy to see us coming back and starting to do something. Do you guys have any questions?
Matt, how does, how does a person, if they want to participate in the races, how would they go about that?
They can show up the day of the race and sign up for a race that day, but realistically, most people use what they call BikeReg, which is an online registration site. That's pretty much the site for cycling, running, triathlons, and all sorts of different events. We're going to advertise that on our Facebook page, as well as USA Cycling. If you looked at USA Cycling, they are going to have this event listed under Events, and they can go right to BikeReg and register for that. There is also going to be a clinic from 7:30 to 8:00, where the road is not going to be closed, but we're going to, we are going to have the CCNS, which is Charles Coaching and Nutrition Systems. They're going to be coming in and doing a beginner's clinic for new riders so that they can get out there and do a little clinic with them to practice with them and get them ready for racing, and then they'll, they'll race immediately after that.
It's understood that this, you know, March is very, can be very tricky in New England, and it is weather permitting, and, but, you know, we, in past years, we've gotten lucky at times and been able to do all four, you know, four Sundays in March, but there have been other times when it's been, you know, a weekend would be canceled just because of, you know, weather conditions.
We actually nicknamed the race, we changed the name of the race from the Plainville Cycling Series to the Frozen Four. Because having raced there, I empathize with the conditions. It's always windy. It's always cold. It is what it is. And this is a pretty hearty group that will be coming out and racing. And at this time of the season, it's not really the season for cycling yet. That usually starts in April, but they need this kind of speed work to get themselves in shape for later on in the season, and we're going to have some of our participants that are going to be going to Nationals and competing on the national level. So we want to thank you guys for allowing us to use your roads on a Sunday and go out there and freeze our tails off.
Great. Anybody have any questions? Sounds very exciting, and best wishes. I hope the weather holds for you and a great day.
Thank you very much. And if you want to come out and watch the event, we'd be more than happy to show you around. Dress warm. We'll watch, let you watch the race and enjoy yourself.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Next item I have is entitled Betty Bocus Month of Service. I have Sean Cohen and Rhonda Guberman are here this evening to discuss the Senior Center's initiative to have a town-wide Betty Bocus Month of Service. They're inviting groups and individuals to, in quote, "change the world through caring and kindness," unquote, between March 15 and April 15. With your permission, I'd like to ask both Sean and Rhonda to step forward and give a little bit more details with regards to this initiative.
Great.
Thank you for allowing us to be here to tell everybody about what we're doing. We wanted to do something special to remember Betty Bocus. She was always such a special individual in our community, always giving in our community, very actively involved at the Senior Center, and especially in helping us with plans for expansions and helping us get grants and all kinds of things. And we thought about Betty and what she did, and one of the things she did is always volunteered. And as I looked around tonight, you know, we had a whole building full of volunteers, and we have a whole lineup of volunteers, and everybody, I'm sure, if we looked around this room, everybody here is a volunteer. Plainville is well-known for its volunteerism. Betty was always the kind of person who would say, "Is there something I can do to help? What would you like me to do to help?" And it happened. And it wasn't a big fanfare. There was no press or, you know, nothing in paper, but it was, it was always, you could count on her to make things happen and to volunteer. So we came up with an idea that we wanted to have a month of service and encourage anybody to just do something for someone. Maybe it's helping someone rake the leaves, or maybe it's bake some cookies for your neighbor, or maybe it's take your grandchild and find a volunteer activity and start your grandchild out at age three, learning how to be a volunteer, or whatever. It can be very, very small or very, very large.
It could be a one-time event. It could be, you know, buying somebody a cup of coffee when you're at Dunkin' Donuts and, and sort of paying it forward like that, or it could be working with an agency and doing a long-term volunteer project that might spur that love of volunteerism for somebody, or maybe a one-time event. That was a community-wide event. We're actually going to be, we contacted a number of agencies in Plainville and agencies that work with Plainville residents to find out what needs they have, and if they'd be interested in this, we're going to be sending out a letter to them, and we'll have a flyer that'll be available for people to refer to when they want to think about what kind of volunteerism they want to do during this month of service. So it's going to be from March 15th to April 15th, and hopefully it'll extend on, and people will continue to volunteer even after that. But we met with Gary, Betty's husband, and he was very touched and very appreciative of, of the idea, and thought it really embodied the spirit of Betty, so.
And it's very simple. We're just going to ask people to do something, do anything, and if you want to, we'd love to have you call us and tell us what you've done. And you can say, you know, I'm Sean Cohen, and I baked cookies for my neighbor, or you can say, this is just anonymous, but I want you to know I've been helping my neighbor with the garbage every week, or something. And we're going to post these. We're going to have an easel at Town Hall, an easel at the Senior Center, and we're hoping to get all kinds of names and have everybody that's been a part of it recognized for what they've done. Then on April 16th, we're going to have a party. Of course, we're really good at parties, so, you know, it's going to be great. And it's going to be a celebration of everybody's volunteerism and a celebration of Betty as well. And Gary and the children and the grandchildren will be there, so they can hear all the wonderful things that people have done, and we'll hope that everybody here will join us. Anything else you wanted to add? Any questions?
Any questions? I think that's a wonderful way to honor Betty. She certainly was a focal point when it came to getting things done in Plainville for volunteering at so many different causes and events, and she would be just thrilled to know that you girls spearheaded this, and I think you're going to have a very, very long list of people that are going to be doing things, so.
I hope so.
That's, that's very thoughtful of you to create the idea and to be able to put it together, so, thank you for doing that.
And we're going to have pins for people to wear. We're going to make sure everybody here gets one, and that will hopefully promote the project in the month of service. And anytime somebody lets us know that they've done something, they'll be given a pin so that they can wear that proudly and pass on the spirit. And our hope is that people will help others and carry the spirit of Betty's goodwill with them to the future.
Great. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Sean or Rhonda? Thank you again for coming tonight and talking to us. We appreciate that.
Continuing on with my report, the next item I have is the Norton Park Concession Building Bid. On January 8th, the town received 12 bid proposals to construct a new restroom/concessions building at Norton Park. The low bid was submitted by Millennium Builders of Rocky Hill in the amount of $282,000. Millennium has successfully completed similar work for the town in the past. All costs associated with this construction will be paid for from a state grant received several years ago to make improvements at both Norton and Pateroski Parks. The grant was secured through the assistance of former State Representative Betty Bokus. Town staff is recommending that the Town Council authorize the Town Manager to execute a contract with Millennium Builders of Rocky Hill to construct the restroom concession building at Norton Park in the amount of $282,000. There is an item in the new business regarding this recommendation. If approved, construction would begin this spring. We did put, we did give you in your, you know, this evening, a copy of the expenditures that have been made to date. We wanted to save the concessions building to the end because it was a relatively large item. We were hoping it would come in somewhat close to budget, and it appears as if it has, and we'll be able to do it under, under the grant, which, which, you know, the town also contributed a portion of that. That's been budgeted for several years, and we even had a donation of a relatively large piece of playground equipment that was, that went into the, the new playscape that, that was, that was installed as well. So John Bossy's here. He led the, putting the specs together and the bid process. We did consult with Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, as well as the soccer delegation in terms of the design, and we hope to have the project, if, you know, weather permitting, you know, perhaps have it up and running by, by Memorial Day. And it will be located in the gravel parking lot, close to the existing walking trail, you know, more centered inside the, inside the park, which would make it easier for people to utilize in terms of the rest, restrooms. It'll be modern, although the ones, the ones over by the buildings and grounds aren't all that bad. I tried out one, the men's room, recently, so on a weekend, it seemed to be in pretty decent shape, but it is, you know, out of the way, and this would be more centralized. And I think having a concession stand there that could be open for, for, you know, sports groups and whatnot, as well as, you know, perhaps even the town as well. We haven't worked out all of the details yet, but it will, there'll be an opportunity for there to be some concessions opportunities there as well. So I don't know if you have any questions with regards to that, that bid. It's pretty straightforward. Millennium has done work for us in the past. You also have a memo in your, in your package regarding the same.
No questions, but we spoke earlier, you know, when we first spoke about this, about coordination of how, who's going to be using it, who's going to be manning it. There's going to, there's, there's some effort that has to go into all of that. Is it, anything that happens, they're covered under our liability insurance. The town actually owns the building, so it's our insurance, and that would be.
Yes.
Part of it.
Yeah, we don't, I don't anticipate that it's going to be the exclusive to any sports group, and that, you know, we'll make out similar arrangements to what we have down at Trumbull Park, where the, you know, the Little League, you know, uses that, you know, for, for a concession stand. I expect that whatever we require of the, of the baseball, we would require of other, any other groups that would, that would utilize the concession stand. But I, I don't see it as an exclusive, you know, situation, because there are, you know, a lot of different activities that happen down at the.
Ah.
I will point out that the, that the town road crew will be installing the sewer line. We had a choice of putting in a septic system or, you know, because the sewer line is, the closest is to buildings and grounds. It's a little tricky because it's not going to be, it's going to be relatively shallow pipe, so it's going to be a little trickier in terms of installation, but the road crew is going to handle that under the auspices of Don Moschini, and to save costs as well. And, and that will allow us to use the bathrooms, you know, during the, during the balloon fest, you know, because otherwise, we'd have, if we had a septic system, we'd have to shut it down during the balloon fest, just because it would be, it would overwhelm the septic system. We couldn't design a septic system to handle, to handle that particular volume. So we felt that, you know, this, this concession stand restroom is going to be there for, you know, for a long time, and that, you know, if we're going to do it, we should need, we should connect it up to the sewer system.
Right. Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. There's no questions. I go on to my next item, which is the Economic Development Coordinator, and I am pleased to announce that Cal Hager has been appointed as the interim Economic Development Coordinator for Plainville. Cal has a graduate degree from Fairfield University, has been working in the Town Manager's office as an intern. The appointment was made after consulting with Economic Development Commission Chairman Val Dumay. He will begin his new position next Monday, the 28th. I anticipate that Cal will be attending all of the EDC meetings and, and working closely with my office to, to coordinate, you know, economic development issues and, and being the first point of contact for people who are interested. Cal is a very outgoing person, very detail-orientated, and I think he will be a good representative for the town, and I think he'll work well and grow into the position. Hopefully, we could, at, at some point in time, we'll be able to remove the interim title, but I felt that, you know, given, given his relative, relative inexperience, but showing a lot of promise, that, that, you know, putting him in an interim position, and I've spoken to him about it, would be, would be appropriate at this point in time.
Congratulations to him. That's great.
We'll point out that with the, as well, that with the resignation and, you know, with Mark DeVoe moving on to a new position, and, and, you know, he had, we had a, you know, a combined position, as well as an assistant planner. While we restructured, so there's still two positions, but we've eliminated the assistant planner's position, meeting at Economic Development, and then we've taken the, you know, we've taken the, the combination position, and we've made that just, just a planner only, and as, as was discussed at an earlier meeting with regards to the appointment of Garrett Dagel. So I feel very comfortable with having some younger generation, so to speak, stepping up, and, and I think they've been, they've been trained, you know, and have experience with Plainville, they have experience working with staff, they have experience working with, with, you know, some of the boards and commissions as well, and I, and I, and I think they'll be a very, Cal will be a very positive, hopefully, a very positive force in Plainville and something that we can be all proud of.
Great.
All right. And hopefully, we'll have him before a council meeting with, you know, reporting on some economic development activity as, as, as these things move forward. Next item I have is the Financial Dashboard. The Financial Dashboard for the first six months of the fiscal year was included in your information package, I believe, and was posted on the town website as well, and with your permission, I'd like to have Scott Colby briefly go through that, that report.
Sure. Thank you. Hi, Scott.
Hello. Going over the expenditures through December 31st, looking at the first six months, we're coming in at about 6.24% higher than our two-year average, which is roughly about 51.72%. And as you recall, both for the General Government and Board of Education, we're slightly higher due to the health insurance changeover. Looking at the General Government, we're coming in at about 12.2 million, which is about 1.12% higher than the two-year average, which is 53.96%. And looking at the Board of Education budget through December 31st, they've expended 18.7 million, or about 50.35%, which is 9.75% higher than the two-year average. Looking at the hauler tonnages, right now, we've expended about 2,800, and our two-year average is about 2,700, so we're about 184 tons over that. And moving on to the overtime, looking at the police overtime, they're coming in at about 73.73% expended, which is 5.24% higher than the two-year average, while the roadways overtime budget is coming in at 66.46% expended, while this is 42.93% lower than the two-year average. This is due to the project on Northwest Drive that they had a few years back. Looking at Buildings and Ground overtime, they've expended 98.16% of theirs, overtime budget of 17,000. This is 3.17% lower than the two-year average. And looking at both of the roadways and Buildings and Ground snow overtime reports, they are coming in slightly lower than the two-year averages, and that's because in the prior years, we had a little bit more snow in the month of December. Moving on to the revenues, looking at all revenues, we've received through December 31st about 33.1 million, which is 55.21%, and this equates to 0.21% higher than our two-year average. And our current taxes are coming in at about 29.2 million, which is about 63.81% received, and this is 0.24% higher than our two-year average. And looking at the unassigned fund balance, we're coming in at about 11.56%, and this is the estimated unassigned fund balance, and that's as of June 30th. Moving on to the special funds, looking at the Recreation Fund expenditures, they've expended 52.97%, and this is about 5.86% less than the two-year average. And moving on to the revenues for Recreation, they've received 40.35%, and this is about 5.75% less than their two-year average. Looking at the airport expenditures, they're coming in, the number is definitely skewed, at 517.92%, which is 417% more than the two-year average, and this is due to the recent apron project that took place up at the airport this past year. And moving on to the revenues, they've received 39.31%, and this is 4.67% less than their two-year average. Moving on to the Water Pollution Control Facility, they have expended 57.71% of their budget of 1.9 million. This is 2.44% more than the two-year average, and the revenues are coming in slightly over 100%. This is 1.84% more than the two-year average. Moving on to the Plainville Library expenditures, through December 31st, they've expended 54.72% of their budget, which is 2.91% less than their two-year average. And looking at the revenues, they're coming in at 49.57% or 2.46% less than their two-year average. Looking at the special projects, there's been very few things that have taken place through the month of December. The biggest thing to notice is the credit in the Wheeler School project in the amount of 55,000. Due to some recent change orders, the town was able to receive some money back from some changes that occurred there. And just a note, we did receive application for payment number five for the Wheeler School Project. That just came in today, actually, so that will be going through the next Capital Projects Building Committee meeting, which should post sometime in February. And that's all I have to report on the happenings, and I do not have a, or, that's all to report on the Financial Dashboard. I do not have a happenings report this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, the council reported on a lot of happenings, so.
We've been happening a lot lately. You're right. Does anybody have any questions for Robert's report, or anything that Scott had to report, or Financial Dashboard? Everybody's okay? And no questions? Okay. Thank you both very much.
You're welcome.
Well done. All right. Moving on to our public comments, portion of our agenda. During this time, we invite the public to come to either podium, state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak to the council one time. I don't know if we had any signups. Carol, there was nobody that signed up, so I'll just open it up. Mr. Warnett, did you want to speak to the council?
Good evening. Tom Warnett, 11 Eastwood Drive, also Chairman of the Park and Rec Advisory Board. I just wanted to comment briefly on the concession bid. I think it'll be a great addition to the park. It was originally requested by the soccer club as a concession, and that's what was approved by the Advisory Board. John did a great job on the specifications. Just a couple of things to note in the specs. The, the bid does not include the sewers, which Mr. Lee said that the town will take care of hooking up to Dave's building. It also doesn't include any facilities for a concession. Our intention was that the soccer club would provide any equipment needed for their sales. So those two items are not included in that bid pa, bid package, but it, it was a good bid. The building is not going to be winterized. There will be no heat in it, so it's not going to be used as a, as a clubhouse or anything. It's strictly as a recreation concession. Again, Robert indicated that other people will be allowed to, to use the facility and maybe the fire department or something, if, at their, at their funds. We also have the cancer race down there, which is pretty close to that, so they may be asking to use it. I don't know who's going to manage it. I would imagine somebody from town staff will manage it, but, but it'll take some coordination. But that's the intent of the building, is, is to provide a concession, and it, it does add a lot to this side, because a lot of the activity happens down in the soccer field, in the football field, in the tennis field. So I, my recommendation is, if it means anything, let the bid go forward, and we'll look to working well with the soccer club and the town to make the facility a positive thing for Norton Park. Thank you. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
No. I think it is a good, a great idea. I know it's been talked a lot about over the past few years, about having something like that. And the concession stand at the, at, at the baseball field, certainly, I'm sure they'll have some good ideas about managing it and how, you know, there's a whole, I'm sure, list of things that you're going to be coordinating.
Right.
In terms of who can use it, what the responsibility. in terms of who can use it, what the responsibilities are, who opens it, locks it, whatever.
Right, right.
But it's certainly going to be a great addition.
It'll be a nice addition, yeah.
It's time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question for Tom.
One more question, if you don't mind?
Thank you, Mr. Warnett. My major concern with the concession stand, and I think it's a great idea, but the cleanup, I mean, who's going to be obligated to ensure that whoever is running the concession makes sure that all the debris and all the cleanup and everything in that area is?
I would have to say whoever's running the concession, down at the Little League, at Trumbull Park, it's the Little League's responsibility. They maintain it, and they do a pretty good job. Dave's staff picks up the trash, they put the containers there. I don't really see, and again, I'm not sure exactly how extensive they're going to serve, they may just be serving candy and soda and popcorn and stuff like that, so that stuff hasn't really been discussed with the soccer league, but that's the intent, that they will clean up and put it in the barrels, and then Dave will pick them up.
So each group that uses this concession stand is going to have that understanding?
They're going to have to, yeah, because otherwise, it's just like when we have, we let the picnic sites go. If the people don't pick, keep the picnic site clean after they leave, the next year they won't get it, and people come back and back and back, so it's quite a nice thing for the park, and I really don't foresee any issues like that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you know if the Park and Rec is going to be in coordinating who uses it, or hasn't that yet to be worked out?
We really haven't discussed it. Like I said, it was originally, I'm sure you're aware, that the soccer club came to us and said they wanted it because of their facilities. In other towns, they have it, and they do fundraisers where they sell shirts, and this day, so they may be selling all of that. If they do sell actual food, they're going to have to go through the health department like the Little League did, and get their permission slips and everything, so it'll be pretty regulated, but like I said, we haven't met with town staff, because now we have a bid, so Robert will probably be putting something in line for who's going to manage it and how it'll be handled.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody else wish to speak to the council? We don't have a list, so I'll just take anybody from the audience. Anybody else? No?
Oh.
Mr. Edman.
Edman, Joel Edman, 63, Hollyberry Lane, no rail, no trail, and no thank you. I adamantly oppose any trail alignment through Plainville that does not adhere to the original rails-to-trails format. I am one of these, I'm one of those people who enjoy the quiet peacefulness of the cold winter season in various ways outside, without the noise pollution of Norton Park in the warmer months. For instance, dog barking, late night partying, sports noise, the ridiculous tune of the ice cream trucks that resonates through the sparsely few trees that normally filter out some of that noise. What my neighbors, who also put up with this year after year, do not need is more noise, which is obviously going to happen if the trail designers approve of the trail slicing through Norton Park. I previously mentioned some of the deed restrictions that I feel would disallow using Norton Park as an asinine throughway. However, I did not mention one other restriction that is also, I feel unlawful to using Norton Park as despicable throughway for a multi-state trail with a possibility of 200,000 people a year passing through, some of which are not quite responsible people. The original 1928 deed states, and I quote, "That said land shall be used for the purpose of a public park, to be used and enjoyed by the people of the town of Plainville," by the people of the town of Plainville. Also, nor said land be used for the building sites other than those which are necessary for the development and enjoyment for municipal park purposes." We have been told by Mr. Lee that no motorized transportation equipment will be allowed on a proposed trail. I am just wondering how one could effectively police that, knowing very well that electric scooters, electric bikes, wheelchairs, snowmobiles, ATVs will find their way onto a dangerous liability of a convoluted trail that is being redesigned from rails-to-trails to on-road, off-road, almost on-road, and almost off-road, through taxpayers' front yards, backyards, and.
Mr. Edman, are you about ready to wrap up?
My last paragraph, messing with the ever-increasing traffic around and through town. The state of Connecticut and Plainville town taxpayers would be better served using the money that the trail would cost to build and maintain, to invest it forward, towards road and bridge infrastructure where it could be more useful and not a future liability.
Thank you.
No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. What caught my interest tonight was the concession stand. I'm not against it, or challenging it, et cetera, et cetera. The only question I do have is, first one question, is revenue coming out of this concession stand? Who does that, does Plainville receive money for this?
I, the revenue that's coming out of it, it's in terms of, if we sell things.
Yeah, selling ice cream, hot dogs, and, does, Connecticut, getting used to it. Plainville, what do you call it, receives any revenue at all from that concession stand that's being put together? That's the first question.
Well, no, I think what, the organizations that are going to be manning it and using it will receive the revenue from that, not the town. Am I correct?
Well, there may be times when town staff does do part of the concessions as well, we're doing that at the pool area, and during those times, the town would receive the revenue.
Okay, but otherwise, it would be the organization.
Otherwise, there'd be fundraising, just like it is at Trumbull Park with the baseball, when they operated, it would go back to that particular organization, which benefits the youth of the community as well.
Okay.
Okay. Another thing, which is, and this is just from sitting in the back of the room, what caught my eye was, it appears that the town council really didn't even know this was going on.
I wouldn't say that's accurate, we've talked about that.
Just what was said in the package, we're talking how the plumbing is going to be done, et cetera, et cetera, and it didn't, it doesn't appear.
Well, we knew that there was a request for a concession stand to be built, and the town staff has been working on it along with our Park and Rec Board to develop the details of it and those kinds of things, so it had been some time ago discussed, at least, the idea was brought to the town council about that.
Okay, and again, to the town manager, if I may, the town will not be paying, this is all through a grant?
Yeah, we, I think it was a 75-25, so, you know, there is a, the town has already appropriated dollars many years ago, as far as this grant is concerned. It's probably four years ago that we got the grant, and we were saving the concession stand up for the end. The council was certainly aware that the concession stand was a part of the grant application when we made it.
Okay.
So this isn't a new idea, this is something that's been developing over time. They knew it was going to involve bathrooms, they knew it was going to involve the concession stand. We still have not worked out the details of exactly how it's going to operate. We figured we'd do that after we got the bids in and knew we can finish the project.
Yes, sir, thank you. And then the last question, which really, another reason to respond to this question, was on January 10th, there was an article in the paper, and it has to do, the official towns can't continue to defer projects maintenance. Is this impacting these deferred projects or maintenance?
I would say.
There seems to be a large concern of these projects, I don't know what all these projects are, all I saw was the school board, yet out of somewhere, out of nowhere, comes a new project called the concession stand.
Well, you know.
Respect.
With respect.
It just, I just get a little confused sometimes, saying, boy, we're in trouble here, so we're going to watch our projects, or we don't, and then all of a sudden, another project pops up like grass.
It's true, I mean, there's, there are a lot of projects, both on the board of Ed's side and on the town's side, some of which, we've accomplished a great many of them, and the town council and the board has prioritized the projects which they feel should be tackled at a certain point in time. But there will always be things that we have to do, and much of it is done through our capital projects account, the board submits their requests, the town also has a number of items that go into that capital listing every single year. Council, we can't do everything every year, it would probably financially not be, we're not capable of doing it all. However, this project actually fit into a grant that we got from the state of Connecticut several years ago. Betty Bokus obtained that grant for us for park improvements, and we're able to use some of this money now to do a project that has been talked about for quite a long time, but we just didn't actually get to the point where we could put it on the board. Is that accurate?
Couple items, this is not a new project. This concession stand is not a new project, it's been around for four years, and we're, you know, it included several, a lot of different items. What's referred to in that newspaper article, and newspaper articles, you know, don't always leave little gaps, and what was being referred to, that if you go to the town budget and go to the five-year capital plan, what you will see is a list of projects. Now, your definition of project may be different than our definition of project. Our definition of project is any large capital item that exceeds $5,000, and it's considered a capital item. So we're not talking about, you know, a new sewer line, or fixing, you know, but this is fixing roofs on buildings, this is replacing boilers, this is, you know, doing mechanical upgrades, this is replacing fire suppression, you know, fire alarms, this is purchasing new vehicles, replacement vehicles, you know, those types of items. So I would, if you want to have an idea of what we're talking about, we talk about deferring, is I don't believe we're putting enough dollars into our capital improvement program, but what we're doing is we're backing up the requests, so that instead of a truck being replaced every 20 years, it's being replaced every 25 years. So those are the things that I'm not sure we can sustain over time, because the further you push that back, the more that the wave builds up, so, when we refer to, you know, those types of deferred projects, we're talking about, if you take a look at the cap, the five-year capital plan, what you will see is, you will see large totals in future years that have been pushed back because of, you know, the cutbacks in the current year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And ending, I think, I'll say this, I think the concession stand would be a good idea, reason being is the activities that you're seeing more and more of at Norton Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so?
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. I'd like to talk about how taxes operate. The last town council meeting, it was posited by the town manager that somehow the mill rate on our property taxes is connected to the inflation rate, and I just want to express to all of you, hopefully not educate you, but just get it out in the open, that that's not how taxes operate. Taxes are a, no, they work on a percentage. You know, what is it, 6.35 is our sales tax in the state, you know, our income taxes are graduated, and they're all percentages of either income or purchase prices. If the inflation rate goes up, the sales tax doesn't go up to 7%. You know, if the inflation rate goes up, our income taxes don't go up. If we make more, if we spend more, then the percentages brings, you know, a higher amount of revenue into the government, state, or town. But the idea that somehow if the inflation rate goes up, the property taxes, the mill rate should follow that somehow, or be connected to that, that's just a false premise. I mean, I'm hoping it's not some kind of, you know, get that idea out there to, to kind of soften us up for another potential mill rate increase this year. No, if our, you know, property taxes go up, our town becomes less desirable to move into. You know, people moving, you know, they check out the property taxes in certain towns, you know, if it gets too high, then our properties aren't as desirable. If we want to sell them, we might not be able to get as much as we could with a lower property tax. And for renters in this town, if the mill rate goes up, you know, I don't think there are a lot of landlords that just want to eat that, you know, they're going to just pass it on to the rental properties, so, you know, the mill rate is a percentage, it doesn't rise with, with the inflation rate, it only rises if you want to spend more money. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Joanne?
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. For the record, I too strongly oppose alignment C and of the trail, and any, which impacts backyards, front yards, particularly Pearon Road, Pierce Street, Hemingway, Broad Street, into the park, and any other alignment that you might cook up, that will be invasive and intrusive to the town of Plainville people. And Broad Street, as I said, better get ready, if in fact this thing is going to go through, they better get ready for telephone poles to end up in their living rooms. So Broad Street people out there better wake up, better wake up. So, I don't know, I guess just can't get through to all of you up there, just how bad this is. It's a bad idea. So, never hear anything from you as to how you might be changing your feelings about this, or what, you never write about it, you never speak about it. I guess you're all in bed with each other about it, that you want it. Okay, that's a political term, so I can use it.
I got it.
Yeah.
You got it.
Okay. So, all right, the next subject I want to bring up tonight, this concession stand puzzles me. Just where is it going to be, on the pool side, or on the side where it is already, where the bathrooms are? This means it's going to be a combination of the bathrooms and food?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you're talking about?
Right, that's correct.
This new structure?
Correct.
Correct?
There will be bathrooms, and then there will be a part of it that we could, or whoever's managing it could sell food.
Well, where is it going to be, this new structure?
It's not over by the pool, it's over by the walking path on the other side of the park.
The gravel parking lot.
Where it is now?
The gravel, no, the gravel parking lot.
Where the gravel parking lot is?
Where the what?
The gravel parking lot.
The gravel parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I see, over there, okay. Well, it just seems to me that you've had this in mind for four years, and all of a sudden, we've got to have this big structure. Is it going to be huge?
Is it huge?
Yeah.
I wouldn't say it's huge.
So you're going to keep the ones down by the buildings and grounds people, right?
The bathrooms down there?
Yeah.
Correct.
Those are going to stay, and then you're going to have the new building where the gravel parking is.
Right.
Okay, so it sounds to me like this, and there'll be a push to build it, because you'll probably, if, if in fact... if, if in fact, this stupid trail goes through, slicing through the park, that's what it seems to me that you're getting ready for, to have a place so they can get their little pieces of pizza, and their little bottles of water, and their little sneaky snacks, so they can continue on down the trail.
Okay. Your time is up, Joanne.
So, it just seems to me that, I don't know.
Wrap it up.
It puzzles me, and I get perceptive now and then.
Okay.
And it doesn't sound good. Just, can't they just go down there? I mean, the park now is an extension of the schoolyard and a sports center. For goodness sakes, can't they bring their own water?
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? I don't see any hands going up. If so, I will close the public comments section, and we will move on to the rest of our agenda. We have no old business, so, under new business, we have a couple of things.
Motion to award bid twenty nineteen dash oh nine E Norton Park concession building to Millennium Builders, Rocky Hill, Connecticut, in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number two.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any other items of interest to discuss tonight?
Just one. During the public comments section, one person remarked with regards to the inflation rate and the connection to the mill rate. My presentation did not connect the inflation rate, and have to somehow say that should be tied to the mill rate increase. The reference to the inflation rate was just to make a comparison against the expenditures that the town has made over time, the expenditure increases, and the comparison that the expenditure increases, which over a ten-year period has been fourteen percent, while the inflation rate during that same period is sixteen percent. So just pointing out that the expenditure increase over a ten-year period was actually less than the inflation rate. There was no connection of the inflation rate to the mill rate, and I did not intend for it to be that way. It was just a comparison of the expenditures, how much we expended, and just showing that if you take into account the inflation rate over time, that the expenditures in town, if you take into account the inflation rate, is actually, you know, been less, expenditures have actually gone down if you take into account the inflation rate. And I'm not saying you should take into account the inflation rate, all's I'm just saying is that the expenditures over that same period of time has been less than the inflation rate, which I think is a remarkable achievement by the town, and by the town council, and by town staff over a ten-year period.
Okay, anything else?
With regards to desirability, I would, you know, one of the things that we did point out as well, is that, you know, while the state of Connecticut is losing population over the last ten years, the town of Plainville has actually increased population over a ten-year period, which one could rationalize, it makes, you know, in comparison to the rest of the state, perhaps it makes Plainville more desirable, because, you know, we're gaining in popul, not a lot in population, but we are gaining in population, while many other communities, as well as the state as a whole, is losing population, so. So I think we're more than holding our own as far as desirability is concerned as well.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to comment on? All right. Mr. Lee, we do not have an executive session tonight, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.